All right. So that will get us down to the public hearings. And it's District Election and Public Hearing, number one. Composition of the city's voting districts. Mr. Tully, is that going to be you tonight?
It certainly will be.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. On January 9th, City Council adopted-
Can you really speak into that a little closer, Tully, please? Thank you.
How's that? Is that better?
That's better.
Then I can't see. On January 9th, City Council adopted a resolution declaring the city's intent to transition from at-large to district-based elections pursuant to Elections Code Section 10010. And that's why we're here this evening. Pursuant to that same section, the city is required to hold two public hearings within a 30-day period before commencing with the drawing of any draft maps for the proposed voting districts in order to receive public input regarding the composition of the districts. The public hearing tonight is the first of those two hearings, and the second will be on March 27th, 2019. To facilitate the discussion we have with us tonight, National Demographics Corporation, and they will be giving us a presentation as well as answering any questions and offering suggestions to City Council. However, before they step forward, I also want to indicate that we do have Spanish interpretation available tonight, and I will ask one or both of our interpreters to step forward for a moment.
Buenas tardes. Tenemos un servicio de interpretación simultánea. De haber alguien aquí que necesite la traducción al español, por favor, nos lo hacen saber. Tenemos equipo en la parte de atrás.
Thank you. I couldn't have said that better myself. As a matter of fact, that's why I asked them to step forward, because I couldn't say that myself. And now, before I say anything else foolish, I'd just like to introduce Doug Johnson and Robert McIntyre from National Demographics Corporation, and they'll take it from here.
Okay. If you wouldn't mind repeating your name again, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. Thank you. So, good evening. I'm Doug Johnson from National Demographics, and this is Robert McIntyre. So it's our pleasure to be with you this evening, and it's our pleasure to work with you on this interesting process as the city works its way through it. So just a little bit of background. At this point in this region, people are probably fairly familiar with California Voting Rights Act, but it is new to Camarillo. So the law is loosely based on the Federal Voting Rights Act, which most people have heard about. It's in the news a lot. And the federal law has been around since 1965. We know it pretty well. It's been through hundreds of lawsuits, and all the thresholds and precedents have been fairly well set. And what that law has is four tests, and a jurisdiction has to fail all four tests before it can be forced into district elections or found liable of violation. What the California law did is it took those four tests, and it got rid of the two tests that are the center of almost every federal case. So no longer does the protected class population need to be large enough to be majority of a district, and no longer does there have to be indications that race is either overtly or covertly driving voting decisions. Under the California law, all you have to fail is this statistical analysis showing a correlation. There's no need to show any causation between voting patterns among a protected class, generally in California Latinos, voters, and the other voters in the jurisdiction. So it's made it much, much easier for plaintiffs to win these cases. And it is worth emphasizing that there's no longer any need to show any history of discrimination or prejudice or anything like that. It's simply you failed the statistical analysis, and you're liable. So that has led to an explosion in challenges, and just about everyone's just switching. So in the top left, you can see, we actually just updated these numbers, and they change almost daily, but we're now, as far as, we're now aware of 177 school districts that have been through the transition process to district elections, and I'm sure there's some that we missed in our accounts. 28 community college districts, just checked, the latest number is 116 cities. One thing to note is that before this law, there were only 29 cities that had district elections. So we've gone from 29 to 145 in the space of about 10 years or less. So the 116 is those that have transitioned, and we had 29 already there. So that's, it's only one county board of supervisors because the other 57 were already by districts. So the last county got sued and switched. And now we're seeing a lot of activity in special districts. Water districts, hospital districts, airport districts, all those jurisdictions are now starting to see challenges and having to make this change as well. And the reason for this is not that the 300 jurisdictions are violating anyone's Voting Rights Act or violating anyone's civil rights or showing discrimination. It's financial. That's why this, we call it a quiet tsunami sweeping across the state. On the right, you can see the settlements of jurisdictions that fought or that didn't act, or that were before the new kind of settlement provisions. And I'm sure you've heard of Palmdale, 4.7 million. Modesto, huge, $3 million. And this is just what's paid to the plaintiffs. And so the jurisdictions have all been switching and not fighting because they just don't have that much money to spare. Recently, we've had, obviously, a couple of big headlines. Palmdale was always the one that fought tooth and nail and lost. Now Santa Clara and Santa Monica have both fought. Both of them are appealing, but Santa Clara spent, actually, that number's out of date. We got new numbers recently from the city. They've actually spent $800,000 on their defense, and they just fought the fee award, and they won. They got the fee award reduced from 4.2 million to only 3.15 million. So ouch, you know? They're appealing that. And then Santa Monica is the big one. They have not disclosed how much they spent on their defense, but estimates are somewhere between $5 and $8 million spent on their defense. And certainly, the fee award, if they don't win on their appeal, will be even higher. So it's the money figures that are driving this big wave. It's making this transition is not any indication of violating any laws or prejudice or discrimination or anything like that. In terms of the process, as was just mentioned, this is the first of the two initial hearings. The law's a little unusual, and the way the state requires it, we have to do these two hearings before there's any draft maps. So these are informational. It'll be essentially the same presentation in both of them. And the goal is to get the word out and let people weigh in on what they think the draft map should look like before any official draft maps are drawn. So once we get through these, have some time for the public to submit maps, then we'll move on to actually releasing all the publicly drawn and our consultants' drawn maps. And then there'll be two more hearings, at least two more hearings about those, before the final hearing and adoption. And we're in a little bit of a weird spot timing-wise, because once you have district elections, after every census, you have to update those lines. And so the census will be held in 2020, but the data doesn't come out until 2021. And so the map you adopt through this process will be used for your 2020 election, and the two seats that are up in 2020 will be, the election will be held by district. Then the map will be updated following the 2021 census, or 2020 census in 2021. The map will be updated before those 2022 seats ever hold an election. It's a little weird, but that's what, there's about 30 jurisdictions going through this process right now, and we're all in the same boat. It's just the result of the timing. So in terms of big picture on the process and the rules, there are three must-dos. The federal laws on the left are our requirements. We must have an essentially equal population in each district. There's a few percentage spread either way, but it's really, really strict requirement. We also must comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act, which says that if there's a neighborhood that is heavily made up of a protected class, so Asian-Americans, Latinos, African-Americans, or Native Americans, then that neighborhood cannot be divided in a way that dilutes their voting strength. And at the same time, the third requirement is no racial gerrymandering. So you're going to see with Robert in just a minute, a map showing kind of estimates of the ethnicity of each city block in the city. There'll be color shaded to show you the percentages. You can't take a pen and draw around the color shadings based on the color shadings. What the law says is race cannot be the predominant factor. So when I talked about the Federal Voting Rights Act, I talked about neighborhoods that are heavily made up of a given protected class. We want to try to draw a map based on neighborhoods, not city block by city block, looking at where ethnicity becomes predominant. So those are the requirements. We have to do that. Your legal counsel and NDC will work together to make sure that all the maps come to you either comply or have a big red stamp saying this is a concern. Where the decisions come down, and where the public and ultimately the council really get to weigh in, is on what we call traditional redistricting principles. And this list is a traditional list. One of the things that you have is considering an adoption of a resolution criteria where you can really specify which of these you want to focus on, or you can just go with the standard list. First is communities of interest. We'll talk about that a little bit more in a moment. That's roughly your neighborhoods, but there's some added twist to that. Then we want the districts to be compact and contiguous and follow visible features. All three of these are so that they're easy for the voters to understand. When a resident wants to go out and knock on doors for a candidate and get their friends to knock on doors, we want it to be easy to know which doors to knock on. And that's a lot easier if the lines go from, you know, the highway to the freeway than if it's up this street and over that street and that kind of thing. And then one of the criterion that is a traditional principle is respecting the voters' choices and empowering the voters by trying to avoid putting current council members in the same seat. And often, this kind of, people say, "What is that?" And I say, "Well, really, it's empowering the voters because it's letting the voters decide which council members have earned reelection." If two council members end up in the same seat, well, then the voters, it doesn't matter if the voters think they both deserve reelection. They can only have one. And so one of the things to define if this is a criterion is it's not like Congress, where they go through voting patterns neighborhood by neighborhood, and they only pick their supporters. That's not what we're talking about here. We're simply saying not having two council members in the same seat is a goal. And I would do note, it is a goal, it's not a requirement. So it's something we aim to do, especially if the issue is, can we move this line one block over? So that's something we do recommend as one of the criterions, but it's not a requirement. And then planned future growth. We mentioned it, but it's grayed out because, as I mentioned, this map will only be used in 2020. There's not a lot of growth that's going to happen between now and 2020. But I don't want it to be a surprise when you come back to this in 2021, and that, when you revise the lines then, they'll be in place for the whole decade. So that would be a time where you really want to take into account planned future growth, try to under-populate your fast-growing areas and over-populate your slow-growing areas. But just want to mention it so it's not a surprise. So that, I'm going to turn to Robert. He's going to walk through a little bit of your local demographics and how these things actually apply to Camarillo.
Good evening. My name's Robert McIntyre. It's a pleasure to be here. One of the major factors we have to look at, as you've heard Dr. Johnson mention, is the makeup of the population of Camarillo. And so at the 2010 census, there were roughly 65,200 people living within your jurisdiction. And of those, you can see the breakdown of the population was roughly 23% Hispanic, 62% Caucasian, 2% African-American, and 11% Asian-American. And on the left box, you can see, we have to look at not only the total population, because we will population balance based on the 2010 census numbers for this iteration of your maps, but we have to look at the citizen voting age population numbers when we look at the protected class voters. So in this case, we see that Hispanic voters at 19% and Asian-American voters at roughly 10% are statistically significant groups and could, depending on how compact they are living within your city boundaries, could have an impact on elections within a district or two. Also, if the city decides to maintain the five-district current setting, that would mean each district would be roughly 13,040 voters per, for a population balance. So one of the things we need to do is look where the protected class voters live. And as we said, the Asian-Americans were roughly 10% of the citizen voting age population, and we can see you have a significant portion. And the color coding legend is on the right there. So when we look at that medium blue, that's 25 to 35% on the large block on the left. But as you can tell, there's not a ton of housing tracks in that area. So there are definitely people there, but it's not your densest part of town on the west side of town. And on the northeast side of town, that's a little more dense part of town, and you have another significant group of Asian-Americans living on that side of town.
Do you have a little, do you have a-
A pointer?
Yeah. Do you have that where you can?
Thank you. So right in here, the blue we're looking at, the blue blocks, and even that little green, and then on this side. But on this side, you can see there's not so many housing tracks based on, in 2010. And so it's a bigger-looking block because it's just a bigger area with fewer people in it, whereas over here, you have slightly denser population units. Looking at the same information for Latinos, which were 19% of your citizen voting age population and 23% of your total population, we can see that there are much denser areas of town along the 101 freeway, especially where the 101 meets the railroad tracks right over here, not too far down the street, actually. And so that's where you have your most dense populations of Latinos within your community. And so as we start looking at drawing maps, you heard Dr. Johnson talk about the idea of not intentionally diluting or separating kind of these densely-packed pockets of protected class voters so as to dilute their voting strength. And so these are the areas we're going to start looking at as we start drawing, you know, we start having a conversation around neighborhoods and communities of interest, especially around these particular densely-packed areas of town. Also, at the bottom, you can see there is a voting block over here that, but there's only 11 people living in that census block, so it shows a 75 to 100% Latino grouping, but very, very few people. So it looks big and important. It is important to those 11 people, but in this case, not a large statistical block. And there was no concentration of African-Americans or Native Americans within your jurisdiction. So Dr. Johnson mentioned the idea of communities of interest. And communities of interest is kind of a really neat concept because it really means what, it's what's important to you. And so for some of us, if we have young kids, we're really attached to our elementary school district boundaries. That's important to us. To others of us, we really are attached to our park, our other landmarks in town. But it could mean other things. For example, you know, those of us who went to SC, "Fight on. I want neighbors around me who went to SC." But it could also be around other things, like, you know, such as education, linguistics. And some of the things we do see is while some communities of interest want to be grouped together because of their commonality, others, we see, like, sometimes with senior centers, want to have two representatives. So they actually want to be split because they want two representatives that they feel like they could reach out to if they have issues. And so we do want to hear where communities of interest want to be put together and where they want to be separated. Those are also valuable pieces of information. So what does that mean from a policy and mapping conversation when you look at the ideas of the Federal Voting Rights Act, the traditional communities, or the traditional criteria? Well, we talked about, Dr. Johnson talked about compact maps. So here, the Compton map is actually a very good example of what a compact map would look like, where you only see little kind of zigs and zags within kind of a normal, you know, square or circular area just to offset for population balancing. On the right, you have Glendale Unified School District, and they've got that nice, neat mountain running right through here where there's nobody living on the side of the mountain. But the breakup was done in a way that kept each region fairly compact and dealt with the density variances across the city. Some other policy decisions you might see, Pasadena and South Pasadena are great examples. Pasadena, each of the council members felt like it was important that they were each part of the economic driver or interested in the economic driver or engine of their community, Colorado Boulevard. And so that's why some of the choices were made on how each council member touches Colorado Boulevard there. When we look at South Pasadena, the conversation with South Pasadena from a policy perspective was very much, you have very different diverse types of communities between north and south. And so every council member wanted to represent a cross-section of society within their community. And so that was what the effort was here with the north-to-south map you see. And on the top right was Central Unified, the high-population dense business areas up in the northeast, but this is all rural farmland out here. And so every council member wanted to cross-section so they represented not only city, but the farmland as well. And so different policy decisions that weigh in are, we're basically providing you examples on what other jurisdictions have done as they're weighing in and making choices for drawing lines within their jurisdiction. So with that, Dr. Johnson's going to review some of the mapping choices that your staff has made available for yourself and the community, and then we'll answer your questions.
Yeah. So one option we offer in this, is not required, but the city has chosen to do it, is mapping tools. So I actually love this because, you know, you're used to the city has a policy, and people come to this podium and say, you know, "Yes, I like this policy," or "No, how dare you consider this policy." Well, in this case, with these tools we're making available, someone comes up and says, "I hate the map you're looking at." Hand them a tool and say, "Fix it." You know, the public gets to draw their own maps, and at least a very interesting dialogue and different approach of people understanding the choices because they've wrestled with them themselves. And one thing we emphasize is that we have a number of tools, and people have different levels of comfort with each of them, so they should use a tool they're comfortable with. If someone wants to just take a map of the city and draw lines on it, thrilled. We will take that. We'll put it in our computers. If it's not population-balanced, we'll send it back to them and say, "Do you want to try to population-balance this?" Or just put it in as it is, an idea, even though it's not a legal map. But for those that want to get into the weeds a little more and get into the details, there's different levels of tool available. So the first is a simple one-page participation kit. And this will be going up on the city's website. We actually just finished it a couple of hours ago, so it's not there yet. But it'll be going up on the city's website. And what this is, is we've divided the city into units of geography that we call population units. They're really a practical tool. We try to make enough of them that people have flexibility to draw the map that they want, but not too many that they're overwhelmed by the math of adding it up. Simply print it out, figure out the area you want in district, and add up those numbers. Those are the total population numbers for each of the little areas. And then once you get to, there we go. Yeah. The 13,040 target with no more than, you know, I mentioned there's a little bit of flexibility. There can be no more than 1,304 people difference between the biggest and smallest. And so once they get the city drawn up, they send this in, and we put it in our computers and confirm their numbers, and that becomes a map that goes in the packet. If the adding up all the numbers is a little much, or if they want to get into the demographics of the districts, and the user is comfortable with Excel, well, then we have another version where instead of population counts, each of these numbers is just an ID number, and there's an Excel file. And they simply go down the Excel file, and they enter the district where they want that population unit assigned, and Excel does the math for them. And it generates, it tells them if it's population-balanced, and generates the demographics of the district so that they can see those numbers and they don't have to do the math themselves. We always say, "Don't try to learn Excel to do this. It's not worth it." But more and more people are experienced and comfortable with Excel now that they find this handy and useful. And we're starting to get more and more people that actually, like, unlock the spreadsheet and start doing all kinds of their own analysis and math. And it's kind of fun to see that. That's what we want to see, is people digging into this and really getting interested. And so these two are both available. We sent them over, and they'll be up on the city website soon. The other one that takes a little longer to prepare, and so I'm showing you the Redwood City just as a sample site because our technical team is building the Camarillo one. This is actually online mapping, where city block by city block, using the same data that we have on our expensive redistricting computers, people can draw their own maps and submit their own maps. So you can see, there's a lot more data. This is a one-page referencing. We'll send it over as a printout that people can print out. We definitely recommend they print it out because the tool, unfortunately, was written in 2009, and it feels like it was written in 2009. There's no doubt. What we find is about half the people get into it, get frustrated, and go back to one of the other tools. The other half get into it, get over that learning curve, which is tough, and then they love it. Almost no one submits one map. Once you figure it out, then they submit two, three, four maps doing different things. So, you know, it's zoom in, zoom out, just like you would on other programs. A lot of data. I won't go through all the details. We'll have this live before the next meeting so we can actually show the site at the next hearing. But it does let people, they can color in the map with those Latino percentages that you just saw, or the Asian-American percentages. And then as they live pick city block by city block, the numbers will change, and they'll see the demographics of what they're doing. One thing we do emphasize, though, as people draw maps, is that it's highly likely none of the initial draft maps will be the final map. You know, part of this process is discussing and trading off, and usually, the final map ends up being, "Oh, let's take the west side from map A and the east side from map B and put them together somehow." So we always encourage people when they send in their maps to explain their thinking. What are they looking for? What happens 90% of the time is someone spends like four hours getting their district around their neighborhood just right, and then in about 20 minutes, they throw together the rest of the numbers for the rest of the city and don't really pay attention. Well, someone on the far side of town hates that map because they're in the thrown-together part. If you submit a note saying, "I really think District 1 should be exactly this because I live there and this is what it does," and then I just population-balance the rest, the other person knows to take your map and just clean up the east side. If all you do is submit your map, that person comes to this podium and says, "Map A is a piece of junk." You know? So it's important to share the thinking because often what happens is someone shares an idea, an illustration idea, and that idea makes it into the final map, even though their map isn't the one adopted. So when you hit submit a map up here, you can first check to make sure your map is contiguous and has all the areas assigned. And then when you hit submit map, it actually asks you to type in a description of your map and what your goals are so that it prompts that comment. But again, these are all optional. You know, people can still come up here and just say, "I like map A. I don't like map B." But for those that want to get their hands dirty and really get into this, we applaud the city for putting these out, and we look forward to working with people on how to do them. Also, there's Contact Us. That has like our cell phone numbers and email addresses, so we're happy to work. We can even go so far as like to WebEx with somebody's screen and help them through if they run into trouble. I will say, one thing that often comes up is that you get, you know, 10, 15, 20 maps, and at first glance, that doesn't seem like a lot. But there are only so many ways to draw up the city. If you get five or six maps from the public, you probably have a pretty good cross-section of the options. We'll add things in to make sure you have a good cross-section. But don't expect, you know, 500 maps. A, that'd be overwhelming, and B, there just aren't that many ways to draw the city. What we're really hoping for is somewhere between 5 and 30 would be great. So that's our presentation. The goal of the hearing tonight, as was mentioned, is to get input on the communities of interest and what people think should be the building blocks if they're ready to offer that input. And of course, we're happy to answer questions and answer anything you or the public may ask.
Thank you for your presentation. Are there any questions? Mr. Moshe has a question. Gentlemen?
Two in particular. The process of submitting maps. Once people draw a map and they submit it, they're submitting it to you guys? And what happens after that? Do they have to come back at a subsequent meeting and present their map? Or once they submit it, does it kind of speak for itself if they've added notes? What further do residents need to do following the submission of their map?
Sure. So as soon as they submit it in whatever form, we'll put it in the computers. They'll all actually appear in the same format to you. You won't be able to look at a map and know how they drew it because we want them all to look the same professional, similar feel. And that goes in your packet on the city website and is available for comment and part of the discussion. If they want to come and offer comments, that is fantastic. We like to see that, but they don't have to. There will also be, excuse me. There will also be a listing of all the maps and the comments from the person who submitted that map going up on the website and in your agenda packet. So whatever they submit will go to you. We don't screen or block anything. Even if it's not population-balanced, we still put those maps up to you so that you can see the ideas and goals they had, even if it's not a map you can actually adopt.
That actually kind of leads into my second question, and that's when people do submit a map, if they, I know there's a multitude of different ways to do so, but if they submit it online using the tool that you guys are building right now, is there anything to automatically flag? In the beginning of your presentation, you had a set of guidelines. You know, ideally, this is what we want. Your map, the map should achieve these objectives and our goals. If they are way outside the boundaries of something, it's way not population-balanced or it's not contiguous at all, is there anything to automatically flag then and let them know? Or are they just?
No, that, unfortunately, the software's option is either to block submission of the map or to allow submission. There's not a flag option in it. I think there will be in 2021, but not now. So sometimes people want to submit a map knowing it's off. You know, they're just submitting a map of their neighborhood, not a district. So we allow anything through, and then we process it. And if they submit it far enough advance, we'll get back to them and say, "Hey, there's a problem." If they submit it right at the deadline, then we don't have time to get back to them, or if they don't share their contact information. It is worth noting as well, Robert just mentioned to me, I forgot to mention, it's a little bit weird under this law. Normally, there's a deadline for the public to submit maps to you. In this case, the statute is, there's a deadline for us to get the maps processed and posted seven days before your hearing. So we'll actually have to have a deadline ahead of that, oops, ahead of that for the public to turn their maps in so we can process them and make sure they get them posted. People often think that seven-day deadline in the law is their deadline is intended in. Well, no, we still have to process it, put it into our reports, and get it posted. So, as part of setting the full timeline, we'll set that deadline.
And one follow-up question. And if I'm bringing these tool, well, all these are going to be available on the city website.
Correct.
Is that where people will go to, out of the utilize and/or download, like the Excel spreadsheet and whatnot?
Exactly.
And they'll also go to the city's website to access the tool that you're talking about? It's cloud-based?
Yeah, it'll all be links off the city website.
Okay.
Any other questions? Sean asked my question. Thank you very much. Okay, I do have one card. Matt Lormer is here tonight.
You opened the public hearing.
I'm sorry, this is a public hearing. Let me open the public hearing, and I do have one card. Matt Lormer. Thank you. Welcome, Matt. I got your mug found. Okay.
Twice is the charm. So, two words tonight I want to introduce. The first one is transparency. You know, in November last year, we had a councilman, and the signs were disappearing and things were going on. I asked the city attorney to do investigation. His response was, "I don't have to answer you." So, I have a new world, a new word. Mr. Johnson here spoke very eloquently tonight, but I'd like to know if somebody can respond to these two words, ground rules. You know, you guys, when power changes and you hear about lawsuits and all this in the future, I think city councilmen, including the city attorney, city manager, any city employee, should not be allowed to send emails, have private calls, go to golf tournaments or anything. Anything that you guys have questions should only be done in the public view. That way, there's no shenanigans. Not to say that anybody's dishonest, but we've had a lot of issues with the city over the past, and we don't want somebody to spend all this money and have to spend more money because somebody says the books are cooked at City Hall in Camarillo. So, therefore, I would hope that all city councilmen would say to staff, city attorney, city manager, and anybody else that works for the city, no private phone calls, dinners, cruises, anything else. Mr. Johnson should lay out a format to make sure that any public official does not meet with him unless, if you have questions, have no problem here. But any private meetings, emails, or anything like that, I think it's very important because in this country, you find out all the time that things happen behind the scenes. Not to say that you guys would do that, but let's have a word called ground rules. The next thing I'd like to know is if we should, if people should add initiative to make the city attorney or the city manager an elected position, how would that work? And maybe you can describe that, Mr. Johnson. So, again, if you read across the nation and go online, you will read that people have a very low, they don't believe in local government sometimes, large government, different things. I want to hear councilmen. I'd love to have one of you open your mouth tonight and say that all councilmen would not have any private meetings, emails, private meetings, and no city official. That means nobody, including the city attorney or anybody regarding moving lines, correcting the lines or anything. If you want to make your recommendations, that's fine, but it should be done in the full public review because you benefit, especially long-term councilmen if you've been here a long time. So, by the way, that is what is very important, ground rules. I haven't heard that. I heard a lot of nice things here, but again, we want to make sure that people believe in the system. I know you believe in the system because somebody will say that that's very fair to have ground rules. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right. I don't have any more blue cards. Would anybody else like to come forward? If you wouldn't mind, we could probably do it later, but if you could fill out a blue call at some point.
I thought it was a public hearing. We didn't need to fill out cards. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Pull the mic down.
Okay, yeah, pull it down if you would, please. Thank you very much. And again, if you keep it to three minutes, appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Yep, not a problem. Hi, thank you so much for hosting this public hearing. I'm actually really excited that we're going through with this process. I think an important emphasis as we're going through this is to remind everyone that this is a good thing. We're not doing this because, I mean, some people may see it as we're doing this because we have to, but I think we should really look at it as we're doing this because we want to. We want to make our city better. We want it to have better representation. And I just, I felt as though towards the beginning of the presentation that it seemed that this was very burdensome for the city to take on, and I would hate for anyone to be discouraged because of that. But one of the things, as I was looking at the maps, I did attempt to draw my own, and I would like to see four districts with a mayor-at-large selected. One of the questions that I do have, and I'm not sure if this is something for the city attorney or if it's for the presenters today, is what happens if these districts are drawn and no one would like to run? If there's no one that's running within that district or if we have the four districts and the mayor and we have no one running for mayor? It's just, I know that a lot of these are hypothetical situations. However, I'm just curious, I'm mostly curious. The other thing is, I'm also, I think there's a lot of questions this early on in the process that can't be answered, but I think down the road as we progress, there will be definitely, there will definitely be more that, more clarity that we can receive because I know I've presented before how, some of the questions that I've addressed at prior meetings. So, I'm happy to show this. It's really a rough draft, but I did take into consideration which parts of Camarillo needed perhaps different representation. I know one of the things to look into is what does each neighborhood have that needs to be represented? For example, as we heard from public comments tonight, just with Camarillo Springs, it seems as though that needs to be very focused on and because they're in a unique situation to not be put in the same category. Obviously, it's on the other side, but something like Springville. And I'll leave that for now, but thank you again. And I also really appreciate the interpreter being here and that the sign in front was also in Spanish.
Thank you for your comments. I'm sorry?
No.
I don't think, I don't believe she has to on a public, yeah. Okay, so would anybody else like to speak tonight? Okay, so tonight, we're just here to give, I understand, just to receive public comments. So, if nobody else would like to speak, I will close the public hearing. And I think we just, so, does anybody want to make any comments on this? Because there's really no action tonight other than to receive the public comments tonight. Yeah, you want to say that?
Just out of interest, I was speaking with a city council member from Ventura when they went through the process. I think you did Ventura, and if I heard correctly, or she spoke correctly, I think they said they had about 60 maps submitted?
Thirty-six.
How many? I'm sorry?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six. Okay, so not 60, but 36, and she said it was, that they looked quite seriously and carefully at each one of them, so that's a lot more than.
Any other comments?
No, other than I. Other than I, I really like the online tools and I like the different options that someone has to utilize them. So, I especially wanted to compliment our consultant on that because I think that will encourage people to submit maps.
I just had one other question. Yeah. Excuse me. I know this sounds like an old fogey, but let's suppose there are people, and I know there are a lot of people in the city who don't have computers, or if they do, they only do email and they don't have, they don't have the foggiest idea of how to operate other types of things. Will we have maps that people can come and get at the clerk's office? I mean, we have, you know, I've got, I've got at least two neighbors who don't even own a computer, but they would like to contribute to this kind of thing.
Yes, that first tool, the one-page participation kit that had the 13,040 on it and 1,304 people difference, that is, it's a PDF that goes on the website, but also, it's available at City Hall. They can print it out and have a stack.
Okay, because if it's on a website, you got to have a computer to access it, or you got to know how to operate a computer at the library.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. I'm sure City Hall will have them printed out, and of course, if they go to the library, the librarians can print it out for them as well. So, it's easily available. It's designed to be printed on a home computer. That's why it's somewhat small.
Right.
But yes, it can be picked up anywhere.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Okay, I want to thank everybody for being here. We look for a long and a good process here, so thank you.
If I could just jump in, one thing we'll need to know by the end of the next meeting, of course, is how we wish to proceed, whether you want four districts and a mayor, five districts, six districts and a mayor. And so, that's something we will need to know. At this stage, when we're looking at the mapping, it is set up for five districts. And so, sort of a status quo, so to speak, and we will, so that's the way we're proceeding at this stage until we hear otherwise. And so, if we do make a change, we will then make that information readily available on our website as well as available to the public. At the city of Ventura, one thing that we did is if anybody came into City Hall looking for assistance in doing the mapping, we walked them through it. We showed them the tools, and people were really quite happy and found it quite simple to do, especially using the Excel spreadsheet version of it because your feedback on whether or not you're population balanced, whether or not you meet the criteria is immediate because the numbers are there.
And you'll need that by next meeting.
We decide that.
Is that right? I mean, but there's a timeline. You were saying, Mr. Clifford, am I right on that?
At the conclusion of the next meeting, yes.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Trinley.
Mr. Trump, I think there was a, one of the slides had four or five bullet points that you needed input from. Okay, that was just with?
Back one?
Yeah, okay. I thought that there was, no, I thought that there was another, I guess not. But that's the primary, those are the primary issues then that you need council's input on.
No, back.
Yeah, do you need? Could you clarify?
So, there's two things here. The law says that these hearings are held for the purpose of gathering input on communities of interest and composition of districts. So, that's what these comments for the public are, that's what we're looking for the public. But as was just mentioned, we also want, you know, the council has the option at the end of the next meeting to adopt a resolution of criteria if it wants to or to give direction on criteria. And in particular, it's useful for the council to give direction if you want to look at other maps or not. One of the challenges is if we get into the mapping state, draft maps and all that, and we're looking at some maps that have four seats and some that have five seats and some that have six, that number of seats discussion dominates the discussion, and no one's really looking at the maps closely. And we end up with a final map that no one's really looked at. So, we do, if the council's ready to answer that at the next meeting, we do ask after the second hearing if council directs, we want to go for five or for four within at-large mayor or six within at-large mayor, whatever option you want, assuming you're ready to make that decision then. Because then, everyone really pays attention to the maps and looks closely at them.
Follow it?
Yeah, can I, there was another slide that had the traditional redistricting principles on the right-hand side. It's the one I think I'm thinking of.
Okay, so this is?
There we go. So, in the, and this is a question partially for you, Mr. Johnson, and partially for Mr. Pirik then. With regard to the draft resolution, which I think is what you're going to want us to adopt by the next, by the end of the next meeting, correct? I take it that that draft resolution is going to have to be modified to include the question of whether it's five districts or six districts and an at-large mayor or four districts and an at-large mayor, et cetera. And I also think that, do we want to, Mr. Pirik, modify that resolution to talk about some of the traditional redistricting principles?
That's up to you. If you wish for the ones that are on the slide to be included in the resolution, you could request that, and it could be brought back to you at your next meeting for a review.
Well, I guess.
I think we should, I'd like to have a discussion. I don't mean to interrupt, but let's have a discussion about these instead of just closing it up and saying, "We'll come back to it."
No, it's fine, and that's fine. I'm happy to have that discussion now. I just, I'm having trouble reconciling the draft resolution versus what's up on the board. The two are not, no fault of anybody, the two are not exactly consistent, so.
Yeah, and that's because we're coming kind of from different places of, these are the options that are out there for criteria, and the draft resolution, I believe, is kind of the, what's specified in state law as a clear criteria. The state law, but there's a provision of state law that says that you may consider consiguity, compactness, communities of interest. It's not an exclusive list, and so, these are pulled from court decisions over the years. The courts have said these are all acceptable considerations beyond what's spelled out in the state law.
Thank you.
Yes, I, you know, I, I, to me, one of the most important things is to have them contiguous. I mean, I certainly don't want them gerrymandered all over the place.
Be within the law.
In the first place, if, I don't know how the county comes up with precincts sometimes, and I'm going back a few years before they had the larger precincts, but, you know, the people one street over went to one place to vote, and I moved one block and I had to go to a different precinct, and I was all within the same housing tract. So, I just think that having them contiguous so that, and that might go along with communities of interest, but I'm still not really clear on what a community of interest is. But compact, I think that will go along with the federal requirement that they all be about the same size. So, if we have them contiguous, they should be fairly compact in a city that's only 19 and a half square miles. I don't know about the visible landmarks, but I certainly think that Lewis Road is a barrier.
It's a barrier.
And planned future growth, I think we do know where the areas that, where growth will occur in the next, at least the next five years. Down in the 3M area, Springville, and I don't know of perhaps something in eastern Camarillo. And, you know, we sent one off to be, for future consideration, general plan change, and it hasn't come back, but two of them over there. But those are my things. It's really important to me to have it contiguous.
I, it's my view that we should go ahead and, when we ultimately adopt this resolution, I guess next time, we go ahead and adopt all of those traditional redistricting principles. I think it's appropriate that they all be included in the resolution. I'm ready to talk anytime about the, you know, at-large elected mayor with four districts versus five districts.
I am, too.
I'm happy to offer, but I think maybe we should talk about that first and then
Talk about these.
As a separate issue.
I, thank you. I am, I agree that I think we should include all of these. I think we just need to be careful in the wording of the resolution because I don't want us to be forced to use every one of them because until we're actually kind of in the weeds, I don't, it might not be possible to honor every one of the principles. I don't, does that make sense? Can you speak to that a little?
Yeah, in terms of those principles, it's just a, these are considerations we want to look at, and essentially, we would report back on them. But yes, you will ultimately be choosing the map that is the best balance of them.
Okay, so I guess so the wording doesn't require them, but asks us to consider them all, if that makes sense?
Yeah, I guess the way I read, I read it was, I'm sorry, I read it as they're aspirational goals. Is that a fair?
Perfect.
Fair read?
It seems to me if we're going to be considering natural and man-made boundaries or barriers, we need to talk about what we think they are instead of leaving it, that's pretty vague to be in a resolution for things we're going to consider.
Well, would boundaries be gated communities? Is that a boundary?
No.
No?
No, but that could be a communities of interest, but I also think that gated communities are going to be too small to really be a district.
You need to have.
Right, so, that's sort of moot. I think, I don't know if we have to name every boundary that we think is out there.
If there's something in particular that we think is going to, should be considered as to where it would be north, south, east, or west of, and that would all be grouped together, then, yeah.
I guess I look at the principles more in the way of, as people submit their maps, that they're thinking that boundaries might help them create the districts rather than we all have to agree on what the boundaries are.
Mr. Moshe?
No, I follow the similar thought. I prefer to put fewer restrictions on individuals as they get to draw their maps. We can, we can see from the public what they deem to be kind of general, community-driven, natural boundaries and man-made boundaries and whatnot. I think that that definition is broad. It's broad for a reason. I think it kind of takes a lot of different shapes and forms, and I think it's beneficial that we let the community have their input as to maybe what they think some of those are, and maybe we'll see certain trends or, you know, things develop from there. As opposed to saying...
As opposed to saying, you know, we think this is, this must be, you know, bona fide man-made boundary and no one's map can, can cross that, that line.
Mr. Tremblay, do you have another further comment?
No, I, I agree with Sean on that. And I think, you know, hopefully there will be some folks who will submit maps who will say, here's my intentions, you know, here's what I utilized, you know, to, as my, as my aspirational goals here. And that way they're telling us rather than us saying, this is what, you know, we want to hear. I'd like it to be open in the way that has been described.
So...
Wait a minute, you said you wanted the aspirational goals and now you're saying you don't?
No, no, I'm just saying I'm not going to, I don't think we need to divide, decide or define what the visible boundaries, natural or man-made boundaries are.
Oh, okay. You were just talking about that one.
Sorry, just talking about the boundaries.
We'll keep them...
But I would like to see the traditional restrict, redistricting principles as part of our process.
Because they're broad enough to get a lot of public input without the impacts of being, you know, I mean, obviously part of it, we have to be contiguous, so there is some criteria that we do have to, to meet here.
Right.
So your thoughts are that these principles allow that, that, you know, that thinking to, but with the fact that there are some parts of it that we do have to be consistent with, and that would be, for instance, like the contiguous.
Right, you and I might, you and I might have very different interpretations of what a community of interest is, or what a boundary is, or, or how contiguous something is. So I'd rather leave it open so people have that ability to supply that.
But I do think they have to, the boundaries have to be somewhere around the thirteen thousand.
Oh, yeah, no, that's...
Well, that's on the left, that's, we don't have a choice in that.
Ultimately, that's going to be a legal parameter and we've, we're going to have to live with that. But I think what I heard National Demographics say is, you know, that that, they can, they will, they will do that. They will work with that once draft maps are in place. Or once draft maps are submitted, excuse me. They can then determine whether or not they would be legally appropriate, or legally valid, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
I have a question.
Mr. Moshe?
In regards to the traditional redistricting principles, is there a reason why planned future growth is grayed out slightly? Is some sort of emphasis added to that? What? I'm curious.
It's because of the odd timing where this map's only going to be used for the 2020 election. So we're not, it's not really something we'll look at this time around. But I don't, I didn't want to show up in 2021 and be like, oh, here's a new criterion.
Right. In that end, and yeah, not so much in the next year, year and a half, but in 2021, that seems to be a sticky thing in that, how, what is allowable when it comes to planned future growth? I mean, if, if there is planned growth, let's say it's, it's already approved and its entitlements are, actually, I don't, I don't know even what the threshold is for anticipating that this particular area is planned for future growth unless it technically is and has been approved by the city council.
Yeah, well, you're looking at a ten-year span. So it's kind of, you'll know, you know, the areas that in your long-range plan might see growth. And, and it is limited in what you can do because really what we're talking about is roughly you can be five percent over, five percent under.
Okay.
So an area that you think will grow, you would be five percent under, which isn't a big difference. It's not going to be quantized, even if you know it's going to add ten thousand units, you can still only go under by five percent.
Okay. And for that, I guess we look at our general plan and our, our housing element for, for kind of the guiding, guiding light there. Okay.
There's not that much...
There's not that much, no, I know.
There's not that much space when you take out the Cano Creek area.
Yeah.
Counsel, if I can just add something into the conversation. In some of the examples in this slideshow where there were communities that had specific elements of their community where they really thought it was important to have joint representation. So for example, you know, is there a part of town where you don't want to leave, leave it to one district elected official to represent that portion of town? For example, Old Town. Is that something where you would want every one of you at this time to have a piece of that? Or do you just want to leave it to one or two district representatives? So that may be something you want to consider.
That's interesting, yeah.
Well, let me talk about Old Town. I think that dividing it up into four or five would make it so that every one of those people would have to cross the freeway and go way up north to vote, wherever it's going to be. I, I think that that's probably not a good idea.
This is for Old Town?
For Old Town itself.
Because of the freeway that splits it?
What do you mean, go to vote?
Go to vote? Because they're going to be voting probably by dis, they're going to be voting by district.
Multiple precincts or...
But this doesn't change the precincts.
I don't know, I, I don't know. I don't know how that works.
Yeah.
Maybe it doesn't.
If, if I remember correctly, I think the example on that was in Pasadena where there, I guess my understanding is there's a very centralized commercial...
Shopping district.
Shopping area that really is the hub, the commercial hub of the city. Whereas I think in this city, it's far more diffused, no disrespect to Old Town, but, but it's far more diffused in nature. So I'm not sure that that would really be applicable here. I guess I don't feel the need to have each one of us have a slice of Old Town, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Again, because the, because the commercial portions of the city are so spread out. But that's, that's one person's opinion.
Is this the time where, are we, are we doing more than just receiving public input? Are we going to actively discuss what we want to see?
We can discuss, we can certainly, they need some direction, so I may as well, you know, if you've got some thoughts, it's probably appropriate.
No, when it comes to certain communities of interest, when I think of Old Town or anything south of, of the 101 for that matter, I always think of the approach for the, the airport. I think it would be important that at least two, if not more than one representative council member have that interest or that concern in regards to, let's just say, approach the airport. There's a, there's a litany of, of issues around town that I think should be probably burdened, if you want to say burdened, but shared by more than one council member. So that way, those issues can more broadly be addressed and served on the council. I know one of my, one of my biggest concerns in going to districting, and I wasn't particularly a fan of it, was that we, we create districts where only one interest is, is, lives in each, you know, one core key issue only lives in that one respective district. And the other, if there's five council members, the other four council members are not concerned or affected by that issue, or the constituents that might be affected by that respective issue. So while we want to make sure that we have certain, whatever you want to define as communities of interest, I think there needs to be some allowance or consideration for trying to, albeit strategically, share some of those big concerns or interests amongst more than one council member where we can.
Mr. Tremblay, okay.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem philosophically with that, depending on how we approach this. What I, what my observation, just to make clear, is I don't think each one of the five council members needs to have a...
Yeah, I don't, I don't think all five of one particular area. Yeah, because then you're really slicing it up.
But I do think there are...
It really looks like it's being gerrymandered.
Right, well, but I, but I do think that there are those, that to be thoughtful about it, there are those areas that we may well want to do that. So I'm not closing that, that door. I'm just not quite sure how I would, I'm just saying not all five or four, however we do this, which is another question I know we're going to talk about.
This may lead into then the second part of this discussion because if we decide to have an at-large mayor, that, that position helps to, to balance that out in terms of having another person that is concerned about, you know, if there's one district that has a specific concern or a challenge, then the mayor will also, if it's at-large, is sharing that. So, I don't know, it just kind of leads into that discussion as, unless we shouldn't go there yet.
Are you ready to? Well, do we, okay, all right, well, we can, we can start, okay, we can start the discussion. All right.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll, we're all out there first then. So the question, you know, there are several questions here, but, but should the city have an at-large elected mayor? Interesting, just to start the discussion, I have, I personally, I don't know about the rest of you, I have heard from very few people as yet on that issue. I suspect that more people are going to weigh in as the maps, you know, as we get farther in the process. But I've heard from, from very, very few. It's a serious question. It requires some, some thought and I think some, some, some debate. I'm going to give you the upside and the downside, and I'll tell you where I come out. On the, on the, on the upside, there is some appeal, I think, to having one person responsible to city voters at large because they would be unencumbered by having to focus on a, on a specific district. And we've, in fact, we've received an email, each of us, from, from a constituent, and he claims in that email that the desire to have, and Kevin, and this is not picking on the mayor time, all right? He, he claims that the desire to have an elected mayor rather than rotating the mayor position among council members was probably the biggest complaint expressed by people who signed the petition to put Measure M, the term limits measure, on the ballot last fall. I will tell you that that is not my experience. I talked to literally hundreds of people while I was campaigning and while I was walking door to door for, for Measure E, and only two or three people ever mentioned to me having an elected mayor. It just wasn't even on people's, most people's radar screens. What people wanted to discuss was term limits and how long a council member should sit on the council, and I don't want to go back and revisit that. I, I think on the downside, I'm, I'm skeptical. I understand, you know, my, my remarks on going to the district's side speak for themselves. I am skeptical about districts from a governance standpoint, and here's what my fear. I'm concerned that districts increase the potential for council members to become factionalized and think only of their districts rather than what's best for the city at large, which I think is a guiding principle for us. And I think we're going to, we need to work hard on this. We recognize that during our study session a couple of weeks ago, and, and we've got a lot of work ahead on this item, and I'm confident that we will be doing a lot of work on that item. So that said, I'm concerned that having an elected at-large mayor with all other council members elected by districts could actually increase the potential for factionalization on the council. And Kevin, this is why I said, don't take this personally. The mayor is, is in essence, an honorary position, and the mayor has one vote, just like the rest of, of the council members. I don't want to see a situation come up where the mayor either expressly or inferentially or impliedly suggests that his or her vote is worth more than other council members because the mayor is elected at large. Because I think that promotes potentially factionalization on the council and could lead to that. So I'm not, I, I don't think we should have an at-large elected mayor. I think we should have five districts and that's it.
I'll go on.
If, one other comment, sorry, Sean. You know, this is an incremental process too. If it turns out that, and we're, obviously we've been dealing with a heck of a lot of change over the last, just in the last couple of years. Look, look what have, we've done from a governance standpoint. You know, we've gone through this term limits, we've, we've had a turnover in the council, you know, three of us here are, you know, this is only my, beginning of my third year. So we have a very different dynamic on this council, no disrespect to the prior council, but we have a very different dynamic. I think if we wanted to ultimately go, if we ultimately think that having an elected at-large mayor is a good idea, why not approach it incrementally? Why not approach it a couple of years, you know, why not approach it a couple of years from now rather than doing it right now? I, I don't think that's a good idea. And then I've got, I have some thoughts on the other, couple of the other associated questions, but that's it on having an elected at-large mayor, unless you want to talk about how many districts totally we ought to have, but maybe that's a separate issue.
Why don't we do that?
Yeah.
Hold that in your back pocket.
Okay.
Mr. Graven?
I agree with everything Tony said. I, I've always said that I felt that Camarillo had, had the ideal situation for mayor. You grab that baton on the first weddence day of December, you run as hard as you can and you come panting in on the first weddence day of the next December. You have done everything you could. The mayor gets out, the mayor goes and delivers, uh, boy scout and girl scout gold awards, boy scout eagle awards. Sometimes the mayor has to have people help him do this, but the mayor is out at everything. The mayor, the elected mayors I know, and there are only a few in the, in the county, don't do that much. They're much more involved in the operations of City Hall. If you don't believe that, go ask the, the city managers where, where they have elected mayors. But they, I, I believe that Camarillo has the best situation where it has five council members, none of whom is elected as mayors, and where we rotate mayor. I, but I also was going to talk about how I didn't think the mayor should be in a position or the city should be put in a position where the mayor could factionalize it more by saying, hey, you know, I'll vote for this for you because of whatever. I, I just think it should be, and I also think, and I'll just end my discussion of the number there, I think five is the perfect number. I think if you get six, you're just getting it way too factionalized. So that's all I have to say.
I agree with everything that's been said. I just wanted to add one thing about rotating the mayor. Although it's honorary, it still does grow leadership skills. And so I think that's really important to be able to be, you know, growing and mentoring the younger ones here and all taking turn and passing that leadership baton or gavel on, so.
Sean, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, sure. No, I, I agree with what's been said here. I did hear the complaint of the musical chairs in regards to the mayor rotating. And then most people would tell me, think of us as somehow would be related to like LA. I have to say, no, our mayor doesn't, isn't like the mayor of LA. Yeah, mayor is an honorary position. It doesn't come with any real special powers or special vote or anything of that nature. And then most people would go, oh, oh, okay, I guess it's not, it's not all that significant, it's not that bad. They thought, most people thought the mayor had some real divine power or something like that on, on the city council as opposed to it, you know, you are the leader of the city council, you, you go and attend the events, you run the meetings and the like. So it usually calmed most of people's fears about the whole rotating mayor thing. I do support five districts. I think if you, when you start getting beyond that, you really start divvying up the city. One of my concerns when we were talking about districting is what I believe to be the low threshold vote in order to, to be able to essentially win an election. You know, at, at five districts, if there's thirteen thousand individuals within that district, ideally eight thousand of them will be registered voters, six thousand of them will vote in any given election, which means if there's only two candidates, you only need to reach that threshold of, you know, three thousand and one. Whereas everyone up here, we, we had to get ten thousand, approximately ten thousand votes at least, if not more, through a big, broad brush of, a big, broad scope of, of the city. And I think as you divvy up, if you increase the number of districts, that number just goes down and down and down to where maybe it only takes you a thousand votes and that's all you kind of need and you're on the city council. I just think that's, that's too, too concentrated, it's too, too low of a threshold for what I believe is a very important position. And the decisions we make have a greater impact on individuals than what I, I believe that, that we, the decisions we make here have greater impacts than, you know, what people make at, at like, say, the federal level even, at least on people's day-to-day lives. So I think, I think actually the more people who can vote for an individual, the better because in hopes that, that, you know, it's, it's coming from a broader, being painted with a broader, broader brush, so to speak. But I pretty much support everything that was said here today. I, I agree almost a hundred percent with Tony.
I wanted to say something here. My recommendation is that you not take a vote tonight on, on the number of districts. It's been a good discussion that I've heard. And that, that be an item, and I think we've heard already this evening, that there will need to be direction on that at your next meeting so that there will be direction as to how the maps are going to be drawn. So that can be incorporated into the agenda report that's presented to you at your next meeting. meeting.
Just make a couple of really quick comments because there's been a lot said that being the mayor is an honor and a privilege. I have one thing that all mayors that I've known has done, and that is to serve the public, It is an appointment by, in this particular case, my brethren up here that have the confidence that the current mayor is able to do the job. And I think it's very, very important that all council members have an opportunity to be mayor. It is a wonderful, wonderful time in all of our lives. This year is extremely, like all years, very busy, but I have heard of other situations where they have not been able to do that, and it does cause some strife and discourse on council, and I think it served, it will serve us well here. And I do also believe that the five council members is a, is a good number for our city and the way that our city is, is laid out, and I do think in the future that it would serve us well. So I can, you know, I can go along with, with my colleagues up here, you know, all very elegant, much more elegant than I probably was, but I commend all of you for thinking this through and making your comments. Okay, so, Mr. Tremblay, I believe there was one other item that you wanted to talk about, was that?
I was just going to comment, I don't know if Mr. Perry will allow me to, I was going to comment on the number of districts. Okay, if I.
Certainly. My, my comment was intended just to state that that'll be on, something that'll be incorporated in your next agenda because as I had understood the comments from our consultants, that they would need to know by the next meeting so that then the maps would be drawn accordingly.
Right. I don't, I don't think the council should have more than five districts. I, I agree with Sean. Camarillo is not that big a city. The five districts are going to have relatively small population numbers, and I don't think there's any reason to further decrease or dilute the relatively small number of voters who are going to be voting in each district. So I'm in accord with everybody else on that one.
Okay, does staff have enough to go on now?
I, I would like to ask for one clarification. So the traditional redistricting principles that are on the screen now, is it the request of council that, that be brought back? Right now, it's just a draft resolution, and I'm not adopting this resolution tonight, but if you want to see those criteria, those ones for consideration to be included in the next draft agenda, then we can, well, Mr. Tully specifically will make the arrangements for that to be done.
One other thing, I don't think we quite got to a point where we have enough information on the, the issue of representation of Old Town. I heard a couple of different things. I heard that, you know, didn't want, you know, everyone representing Old Town, but I heard another opinion that it should be more than one.
Why don't we leave that?
Well, because you want it in your resolution, it's, it's one of those things that goes into how you do the district.
Yeah, Mr. Tremblay?
Well, I have a comment, too.
Okay, if I go?
You go, yeah.
I, that's something I would like to think about some more, frankly, rather than reach some sort, and, and maybe get some input from some folks, and I also don't think that we have to reach that, I don't think we have to get to that point tonight.
You can add it to your resolution, you know, on the fly.
Right, we could certainly add it, we can certainly add it next time. Frankly, I'd like to think about it and talk about it some more, you know, out, out here, so, but I'm just not ready to go there tonight. I don't know how everybody else feels, I'm not sure.
Well, as, as Sean was talking about it, I think there are other areas that, that have significant problems, too. We've talked about flooding problems on the creek and then impact on insurance rates. I mean, as, as time goes along, there are different parts of town that have different problems, and I don't know, you just can't have everybody hitting all of these, so I don't know, I'm, I'm going to have to think about it, too.
Yeah, I'm going to have to think about the Old Town, too, because I think there is issues very much locally up there, and, and I'm going to have to think this thing, too. I wouldn't want it carved up too much because that was one of the first developments in town, and it's very, very close, it's a, it's a community that's been there a long time, and I do think it's important for, to have some sort of, you know, energy that's up there, and it will be in the future, and the issues, I wouldn't like to have one neighbor represented here and the other neighbor represented there. So I think we really need to, to think long and hard, and that's just one. We may be able to come up with some other areas in town, too. So I do think we need to have some, some more discussion on this.
I think everybody should touch the freeway. That's the, that's the thing you hear most about, it's the thing everybody talks about. There shouldn't be a district that in some way isn't involved with that freeway and that representative isn't going to be interested in putting money toward getting it fixed.
That, that is definitely a partition, no question about that, yeah. Yeah, and it goes through the whole city, too, so.
I don't know, you could not touch it.
Okay, so, anything else?
Um, if you're listening at home, or all of you sitting out there, this is really where it will help for us to hear from you and to hear, you know, we don't live in every part of the town, so from your perspective, what's important to you? What boundaries do you see? What things make a community of interest to you? That helps us, you know, and that's what I'm hoping over the next couple of weeks, that I do hear from a lot of you, or at least submit or email, whatever you do, skywrite it, let us know, because that helps us really, that really helps us see things from your perspective and understand what's important to you as we go through this, because this is a big change, so, so please let us know.
Yeah, I just want to echo that. I think, I couldn't have said it better.
Yeah.
I think the more input, the, the better.
Agreed. Well said.
Staff, you have enough, everybody yet?
Okay.
All right.